All right. We're going to call the meeting to order. Chairperson Monica Logan couldn't be here tonight, is out of state on business. So as vice chair, I'm going to take us through the agenda tonight. We'll start with the chairperson's report. I'll just say a couple of things just in response to yesterday's lockdown at the middle school and the high school by the Granby Police Department. Superintendent Burke is going to speak more about that in her comments later on. So for now, I just want to say I have a middle schooler. And like all parents, I felt how truly heart-stopping that was, you know, to get the information. I just want to thank the Granby Police Department for their immediate response, their thorough response out of an abundance of caution for our kids. And I want to thank Superintendent Burke and her staff for the timely updates as well and the communication. And I also wanted to give a special thank you to the teachers for keeping our kids safe, for keeping our kids calm. I know when I had the conversation with my son at the end of the day about how he felt, he said his teacher was communicative, kept the classroom calm, that the kids listened, and that went a really long way. So just a lot of appreciation that at the end of the day, it was a, you know, unverified threat at everybody's safe and that, you know, the communication was really, was really great. We'll move on to awards and recognition.
Thank you. So although we do not have someone joining us here in person, I do want to share a special recognition that took place this past week. I have a couple of photos to share with you. Don Rethke is the founder of the Granby Grunts Robotics. He is affectionately known as Dr. Flush because he invented a zero-gravity commode. That's his claim to fame. So he is known as Dr. Flush across the country. And he has continued to serve our students at Granby High School and Granby Memorial Middle School as a mentor in the area of STEM and robotics and really has given so much of himself to the community. And so we had an opportunity to recognize him at the Granby Memorial High School library. He was surprised by this. We were told that if we invited him for any level of recognition, he likely would not come. He doesn't like the spotlight to be on him. But it was really a wonderful turnout. We were able to have students from the Granby Grunts speak to the legacy that he has really left. And he was thanked and recognized from a number of his fellow mentors and colleagues past and present. We unveiled a photo and a plaque recognizing Don for his contributions to the Granby Grunts and the GMHS students in general. Here you see Principal Dunn removing the cover. We are standing outside of the current classroom of Tim Barnett where we do CNC, the CNC machine is housed there. And that's where much of Don Rethke's mentoring hours were spent. So although it's not exclusively a home for robotics, we did want to recognize the location at the high school where Mr. Rethke has had considerable influence. So it was really a wonderful time. There he is in the classroom and a close-up of the photo. We had a former student of Don's send in a letter of appreciation. So if you would allow, I'd like to read it for you. I think it really thumbs up Mr. Rethke's influence. Hello, Dr. Flush. This letter comes to you from Jimmy Nezda, the redhead apart of the fabled 2019 Grunts team. I heard you're being formally recognized by the school as our team's founder and wanted to leave them with a little note. I'm not sure what it was that inspired you to start the team here in Granby, stick with the team through periods of low interest and even a pandemic, but I know everyone there and all past Grunts are grateful that you did. The Grunts team is one of the first stepping stones many engineers, businessmen and women, scientists, and even artists take towards successful careers. Instead of being launched into the difficult decision of what college to attend and what major best suits me, many of those questions are answered just by experiencing and being part of the team. Even more so, the values ingrained in first robotics and specifically the Grunts create dependable, hardworking, and respectful students ready for the world after high school. You have also given the opportunity for many parents to connect with their students and greater community, teachers to further pursue their passions outside of the classroom, and for local professionals to teach and guide young students towards their dreams. Thank you as always. May the Flush be with you. Jimmy G. And so this student really summarized what we heard from many students this past Monday. And then it was really bookends to the week because on Friday morning, Don Rethke was in attendance at the Granby Men's Breakfast where every year at their October meeting, the Granby Grunts come and present their robot from the year prior. So it was really a great celebration and I was able to share this recognition with that group as well. So I thought it was fitting, although we didn't want to ask Don to come out again, that we recognize him as a part of the board. On Monday morning, Vice Chair Heather Lombardo and our Chair Monica Logan were in attendance to congratulate Don on behalf of the board. So thank you for being there. It was a nice celebration.
Yeah, it was a pleasure to be there. It was just heartwarming to, you could actually feel the gratitude in the room by those who know Mr. Rethke and everything that he's done for the program and his investment as a community member to share his skills and his knowledge with the students over the years. So it was really special.
Yeah, yeah. So thank you to Ms. Rethke and thank you for letting me share.
Yeah, absolutely. We'll move on now to public comments. We'll ask those on Zoom who plan, who would like to share a comment to just enter into the queue. We're going to start with folks in the room first before we ask anyone to come up to the podium to share their comments. I will note Granby community engagement and attendance at Board of Education public meetings is welcomed and encouraged. As is our custom, the Board views public comment as an opportunity for members of the public to share their comments and concerns with the Board. And Board members will not be responding to comments or engaging in dialogue. As it deems appropriate, the Board may place such matters on the agenda for future meetings for discussion in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act. Procedurally, public remarks will be limited to five minutes and speakers will be asked to identify themselves by name and address. We expect comments to be respectful and civil in tone, and we do not permit name-calling, raised voices, personal attacks, or vulgarity. Lastly, we note that the superintendent is responsible for student and personnel matters. No speaker will be permitted to use public comment to bring complaints against any teacher, student, or staff member or to discuss student matters, which are confidential. Therefore, the use of student, teacher, or staff names is not permitted. Any such complaints or concerns should be directed to the superintendent and her team. With that, is there anyone in the room who would like to come up to the podium for public comments? Going once? Going twice? Okay.
Hello, I'm Julie Hafner from 286 Simsbury Road. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here in favor of having a school resource officer for the town of Granby. I'm not sure if this has been discussed before, but I just wanted to let you know. I've worked in schools for 20 years and I've always had an SRO, and they are invaluable at the school. What they're going to do is they're going to enhance safety and security. They're going to build relationships at my school. I teach a culinary class and our SRO comes in, he's one of the judges, and he gets to know the students and the students know him, and it builds a healthy relationship. And they go and they speak to the officer if they're having trouble at home, if there's trouble at school, if there's bullying issues. It's just another person. Our admin are so busy that I really support having a resource officer. What else? And then community collaboration. I think our police department, our officer at our school is doing a trunk-or-treat, so it just kind of gets the community more involved. Positive school climate. And then they're there for crisis intervention. They have that training that some of our staff don't, and they're available. So I'm really asking the Board if you could put support and SRO at our school. East Granby has an SRO, Simsbury, Suffield. And then I printed off, I'm going to pass it, give it to you, but I think it's really important for the town to pay for the SRO. I don't think it should come from the school budget. I think the town needs to invest in their safety of their students. And the article that I'm going to leave with our Board of Ed does have many, like a lot of the districts, local police department, the town. So I'm asking the town to pick up the cost. Our audience, if you agree with me, please reach out to the Board of Finance, reach out to our manager just to share that opinion. So that is it, and I'll give you that paper in one moment. Yeah.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room like to come up to the podium for public comment? All right. In the room going once? Going twice? All right, and now we're going to move over to Zoom. Any, oh, so far it doesn't look like anyone is in the queue to speak. Does anyone on the call wish to?
Oh, we got one person.
We got one person, okay.
Do you want me to go?
Yep, we got you.
Okay, hey, my name is Donald Robinson. I'm at Towneford Hill Drive in Granby. And I do also support looking into the idea of either school resource officers or, you know, some sort of security. I think we should investigate. Improving our security posture, I prefer an SRO over anything. I think with, you know, the sum total that we spend on law enforcement and education assets, it just makes sense to protect our investment, which is really our children in town. So hoping you all consider that and bring it up for future consideration.
Thank you. Would anyone else on the call like to, does anyone else on the call have a public comment? Is that the only one? Yeah, okay. Going once? Going twice? All right, we're going to close public comment. We're going to move on to student representative reports. Katie is at a volleyball game tonight and couldn't make it, so Sophia is going to handle it solo.
Okay. So a lot of things are going on at the high school right now. This week, and we have our homecoming dance, and that's going to be from seven to 10. There's going to be food trucks there, there's going to be a bunch of games and activities for students. Also, we have our drama rehearsals for the Twisted Tales of Poe, and that's going to be held, the play is going to be held on November 15th through 17th. And it's an exciting week also for our language department because our sister school in France is hosting a bunch of families this week, and they're going to be going to Hartford. I think they're going to Yale. So they're just going to be getting to know Connecticut. And then we get to go in the spring to Paris and to Dijon. And the seniors are meeting with guidance counselors this week, and they're going to begin submitting their applications for early action and early decision to colleges. We also had a college fair last week, which was very successful. And we also had our blood drive held through the Red Cross, and that was October 11th. And we collected lots of blood to help those in need. And PSATs are going to be held next week on October 23rd. And later that day, the NHS induction ceremony will be held. And there's going to be like a reception after the ceremony. And picture retakes are going to be held October 24th, and the quarter closes on October 29th. As for sports, girls volleyball had a game this past Tuesday where they secured a win two to one. And tonight, the girls have another game away versus Kogan Chog, and another game tomorrow night versus Torrington. And another game away Friday night versus Northwestern. Boys soccer had a game on Tuesday against Coventry where they won two to one. And the boys JV team has a game versus East Hampton away. And another game Friday night against Windsor Locks home. They'll have another game on Saturday morning against Summers away. Our girls soccer team also had a game on Tuesday versus Coventry where they won two zero, and they're going to have another game Friday afternoon versus Windsor Locks away. Our field hockey team has their senior night tonight. I'm pretty sure it's against Suffield. And football has a game Friday night versus Coventry away, and JV has a game the following morning, home versus Coventry. Our cross-country boys and girls team had a meet this afternoon away versus Walton, at Bolton, and versus a bunch of teams. And yeah, that's all.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thanks, Sophia. Busy time of year.
Yeah, for sure.
All right. We are going to move on to reports and discussion. Part of the agenda, we have a presentation tonight. Special education programming. Kate Weingartner, Director of People's Services, will be joined by Jen Miller and Tracy Smith, our special ed department chairs.
Hello. Good evening.
Your clicker.
Good evening. I'm Kate Weingartner, Director of People's Services.
Tracy Smith, Department Chair for Middle School and High School.
Hi, good evening. I'm Jen Miller. I'm the pre-K through five Special Education Department Chair.
All right. So I'm here tonight to talk to you about special education programming. I have been in the field for almost 20 years in special education, and so I'm really excited tonight to talk to you about special education. It's really been a passion of mine for some time. This school year, we established a new special education leadership team. I'm the director and I case manage students out of the district, and I also co-evaluate. I'm a complimentary evaluator with the building principals. With me as part of the leadership team is Tracy Smith and Jen Miller, the Department Chair for Elementary. Pre-K to five is Jen Miller. She oversees Kelly Lane and Wells Road, Special Education Matters and Issues. She facilitates PPTs. She co-evaluates with the building principals, case manages out-of-district students as well that are attending private placements or students that are attending VoA or Magnet. In addition, Tracy Smith is the Department Chair for six through 12. In addition, the Transition Academy at the Y. She assists with managing, case managing students at the high school. In addition, she also carries a caseload of out-of-district private placements and magnets and is a complimentary evaluator for working with the building principal and department chairs. So the department chair role is really essential and critical to supporting the building administrators in IEP implementation and compliance. They facilitate and chair PPTs, and they support teachers with any issues or anything that comes up related to special education matters. So some of the benefits of this leadership structure is really having to do with establishing those relationships with students and families and staff that continuum across the district and the consistency across the district. It's really essential to understanding when we're returning students from out-of-district back to what I consider home school, home district. That relationship is really key in having an understanding and knowledge of building structures and systems, schedules, transportation, staffing, all of that is really critical, as well as supporting the supervision and evaluation of teachers and the compliance with IEP mandates. So the leadership structure has been really critical in the oversight of special education and all of the buildings. So what does People's Services Office do? Well, we do a lot. Well, we provide oversight and support for programming for students with disabilities. This includes IEPs and 504 plans. A lot to do with monitoring and compliance with legal obligations around IDA mandates. I'm going to talk a little bit about that and IEP mandates and timelines. We do a lot of data collection, and we serve as a resource to support the needs of all ours in the district. So these are all of the staff that make up People's Services. It's not an exhaustive list, but just wanted to let you know, these are all of the staff that make up special education to support students with disabilities in the district. They carry different skill sets and expertise depending on supporting needs and what's in a student's IEP. Nurses and school counselors aren't necessarily considered People's Services, but we do collaborate a lot with them around IEPs, IEP implementation services, and school counselors also carry, they do a lot with the 504, Section 504s. So I did include them. So IDA. IDA is the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. It's been around for quite some time. It started in 1975 and has been authorized a couple times. It really guarantees special education and related services for students with disabilities that have been identified. It consists of four parts. There are four parts of the law. Part A is just around the general provisions of the law. It ensures that individuals with disabilities receive support and education all the way from early childhood to adulthood. So you'll see part B is a lot, has to do with what we do on a daily basis around special education, governing programs from three to 21, which is now 22 recently. Part C doesn't have a lot to do with the district, but the birth-to-three process. Part C is all about birth-to-three. And then part D has to do with the professional development and kind of the educator preparation. So really, IDA is about ensuring parents and educators that they have the tools to improve educational outcomes for students with disabilities and that we're providing students with FAP. You'll hear a lot about FAP. FAP is making sure that we're providing students with specialized instruction and education under the law between the ages of three and 22, that they're receiving FAP, a free, appropriate public education, in the LRE, least restrictive environment. Extended school year services are also required, and a requirement under IDA that the PPT determines eligibility on a yearly basis for what we call ESY, which is that extended school year, and that's that summer program. So special education eligibility has to do with LEAs, local agencies really required to identify, locate, and evaluate all children who reside in the school district that may qualify for special education services. And in the special education world, we refer to this as child find. So this is any student who, whether they're being homeschooled, they're homeless, they're in a private school, that we identify and locate students that, who may need services or who may qualify for special education. Those are our child find responsibilities under IDA. Once they've been located, we evaluate. Doesn't necessarily mean that they're identified for special education. It's our responsibility to locate them and then evaluate and then determine, the PPT determines eligibility. So eligibility for special education is determined by a PPT planning placement team. A child must be between the ages of three and 22 years old. You'll see some of the law says 21. Recently, not that long ago, it was updated to 22, age 22. These are the categories, the primary disabilities that are identified on an IEP that the federal government, OSF, defines as disabilities, different disability categories. So in an IEP, we're looking at eligibility for these different categories. So what is special education? Special education is specialized instruction. It's, IDA defines it as specially designed instruction at no cost to parents to meet the unique needs of a child with a disability. This includes adapting content, teaching methodology, delivery of instruction to meet the appropriate needs of each student. So this has to do with what do students need? Students need different things, right? So adapting content, that could mean modifying curriculum, the teaching methodology and delivery of instruction. You might be delivering things, providing visual representation, audiobooks. It's really adapting that content to, based on what children need. Specialized instruction includes things like manipulatives, repetition, students need repetition, practice, graphic organizers, and modifications to access content. In special education, we talk a lot about that it's not a place, that it's not a room, it's not a classroom, it's a service. So, and it's specially designed to meet the unique learning needs of students, individual needs. So every student has different needs. And we talk a lot about fair does not mean equal. So I wear contacts, you wear glasses. We both need different things based on our needs, and it's about equity and providing access for students so that they can make meaningful progress. It's not a one-size-fits-all. So this is the continuum of services that we talk about in special education and in education. So continuum of services identifies different service delivery models that provide specially-designed instruction to meet a student with a disability. So we always start, all students are general education, and we always start with the least restrictive environment, right? The least restrictive environment is the general education classroom. It's rich in language, it's rich in curriculum, rigorous curriculum, language development, typical peers. Lots of great things happen in the general education classroom. And then as we move along the continuum, we're always supporting the general education classroom with modifications, adult support, adapted curriculum, assistive technology, small group instruction, different materials so students can access the general education. Some students then also require what we refer to as a resource setting. This is all determined, by the way, by a PPT, not an administrator. It's a PPT, a team that comes together to determine and look at the needs of a student. A resource setting is more of a pull-out setting, very small group, individualized, where students can have, you know, specialized reading, things like that. Then we have special class or a self-contained classroom, and that's really highly structured, individualized programming that students require, typically with significant needs. And then as you go down the continuum, you're looking at pretty restrictive settings that are not, in a home or hospital setting, there's not typical peers and looks very different.
And Kate, where it's a specialized school setting, that's typically what we refer to as an out-of-district placement.
Correct.
You've heard that term more frequently, an out-of-district placement.
Yep. All right. So this is a graphic just representing our current numbers based on our October one child count. Like I said, in special education, there's a lot of data collection that we report to the state and federal government, and October one child count is one of them. Your data is frozen as of October one, and they look at. So as of October one, these were our numbers. We look at Kelly Lane numbers, Wells Road. Over the course of the year, I look at 2021, we were at 291 students, special education. This is three through 21, 22, I'm sorry, three through 22. So our increasing trends in special education and needs have really been increasing over the years. We dropped a little bit in 2022, and then in 2023, we went back up to 286. And in 2024, our October one child count is showing us at 321 students identified with an IEP, three to 21 in the district. That includes both private placements and magnets. So Bear Transition Academy, we currently have three Granby students. And then we have three students from other towns that, that pay tuition to attend Bear Transition Academy. Our outplacement, these are students attending private placements that a PPT has determined we cannot meet the needs and needs of the student and district. So that we have 26 students who are privately placed by a PPT. And then we have students attending magnets, VoEAG and Technical School, that's 13. That number is different than outplacement. So magnets, VoEAG, and Technical are parent choice. And they're placed by, not by a PPT, but a parent chooses to send their child to a magnet.
So they reside in Granby?
Yep.
And the parents chose to send them to a magnet school, a private school, where the parent might be even paying for the child to attend the private school. But we still provide the service for special education.
Not, not private, just magnets.
Just magnets and, okay. So I just want to make sure that that's clear because a lot of times when people are in like the magnet system or they go to a technical school, the community might think that they're no longer a Granby student. But if they have special education services, we still provide.
Yes.
Those services.
We work with the magnet.
Manage the case, okay.
Yep. Private schools, if they're privately placed by a parent attending a private school, for example, like a Northwest Catholic, West Hartford, the town that the school is in supports the, what they call service plan in a private school. It's not considered an IEP in a private school.
Are there any questions about this before we move on? Because there's a lot of data here.
When the students are outplaced, who ensures that their special ed needs are being met?
It's a great question. We do do site visits, so that was, that is also part of the, the responsibility of myself. As, as the director and the department chairs, we do site visits. We work with the private placements. And all of the private placement schools are approved by the state of Connecticut. So we're working to ensure there's yearly meetings, PPTs, and we're ensuring that the PPT is being followed. And we're having those conversations and support with the collaboration with the private placement school. And we do do site visits.
Presumably with some other kind of oversight from the state of Connecticut?
And the state of Connecticut does site visits as well. They oversee, they give them their approval. There's a whole approval process for that. But they have to be approved, private placements by the state of Connecticut.
And as the, sorry. And as the case manager, you know, one of you is involved in all of those meetings.
Correct.
So the yearly meeting and then often for an outplaced kid, they're going to be more often as well, just to make sure that that.
One of us is, we share, share the caseload. So one of us is involved. I oversee all of them, but typically they will assist with some of those PPTs.
I'm wondering if you've seen an increase in identification of students with learning disabilities at the more secondary level in the past few years?
I just began in March, so kind of looking at that data. The numbers overall have increased in special education. And our students with dyslexia also have increased, yes. I don't necessarily know, I'd have to look at the data a little deeper to dive into if it's just at the secondary level. But the state of Connecticut came out with more guidelines and criteria around dyslexia. So you are seeing more increase in dyslexia, kind of statewide as well.
Yeah, I wondered if it was a trend nationally or even across the state that students, more students are being identified later.
Yep, after intervention, is that intervention piece of ski?
Actually, I wouldn't mind seeing data, like how is the data trending? Like see over the last five years or so?
Special education numbers in there as a whole?
Sure.
Especially since COVID, right? We've seen children are having a lot more needs after COVID. So that might be some really interesting.
We have that data, I could easily put it in my superintendent's update to the board.
Yeah, we have that data and then we could disaggregate it by disability as well. So then you could see the trends over the years and what disabilities are increasing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions before we move on? All right, so, actually, I got sidetracked. So leading from this into kind of the programming, when a student is unable to access appropriate learning, FAP, right? Free Appropriate Public Education in the general education setting with supports and services that we have provided, there are times that their needs cannot be met and a PPT can consider an alternative placement. And sometimes that is an out-of-district placement. But recently, this school year, we have opened up two programs this school year, which I'm excited to talk to you about. And the department chairs are going to tell you a little bit more information about them.
So our first program is at the K through two level and it is called RISE. And it's coined as reaching independence through support and education. And currently, we are providing instruction in this program to six students. And the students in this program typically have developmental disabilities or significant cognitive disabilities. So they reach that more specially designed instruction with greater need and wanting to make sure that we are meeting those needs and providing FAP, as Kate had mentioned. So we're providing highly structured learning opportunities and individualized instruction to each of the students in that program. And as you can see, we focus on functional living skills, functional communication, social and leisure skills, as well as academics.
And the other program that we're excited to talk to you about is PAIN.
And that is the personal academics and vocational experiences. We're paving the way to their future. So this is at the high school level. We really focus on applied academics, life skills, social skills, vocational experiences within the school building. You'll see our coffee cart. Some of our students participate in the coffee cart and deliver coffee to teachers at the high school and baked goods. So they're learning how to budget the money, how to collect the money. They check an order form every morning. So this program serves 10 students currently. And again, most of these students have significant cognitive disabilities, but we really want to get them to be contributing members of our society.
And we're always looking for expanding those vocational pieces within the school building. So we're really excited. The coffee cart was grant funded. We started that with a grant from the state of Connecticut this school year, buying everything that, that was needed. And the students have just started implementing it. So we're really excited for, I'm sure if you visit the high school, you will see them in the morning delivering the coffee. So, and these are how a lot of surrounding districts, there is a similar program in a surrounding district now that is in the community. So this is how it starts in the, in the school buildings, finding those vocational opportunities. There's a lot of things that go into the coffee cart piece. There's that social piece, like you said, the budgeting piece, following a schedule, things like that. So there's a lot of applied life skills and functional pieces to it.
The next program that we're going to talk about is the Bear Transition Academy, which has been around for just a couple of years. It's at the YM, it's located at the YMCA.
We're in year two this year.
So this is for students from ages 18 to 22. So once they've completed the four years of high school, they can move on to the Bear Transition Academy. And again, here, we're really focused on the community partnerships, preparing students for life after high school. So they go out and they're working in the community during the day. You'll see some of the pictures there of different places. They go grocery shopping, they learn how to make food based on a recipe, budgeting, and just continued focus on that independent living skills. Obviously, social skills is embedded within the program. So this is really getting kids ready to be out on their own in the life skills that they may need.
And the goal of this is really competitive employment. So we have had students have internships and most recently was hired by an employer outside in one of surrounding towns for the summer. So that's always the goal, is to have them competitively employed. So those are the programs that we've started this year at pretty much low cost or no cost to the district. It was rearranging and looking at caseloads and existing resources. These are the continued needs across the district that continue to be rising and challenging. So we continue to have some chronic absenteeism at the secondary level, usually typically tipping and starting in eighth grade. Early intervention at pre-K is really key and really important. The more that we can early intervene, the outcomes for students, the long-term outcomes of students are better. Needing that more intensive program, the earlier we intervene. Specialized reading at the secondary level definitely is an area of need. Continuing needing reading intervention and reading services at the secondary level is a need. The mental health behavior, kind of challenging behavior in the classroom. We see that kind of across settings. That's, that's a continued need across the district, those, that mental health component. And then continuing to expand our transition and vocational programming for our 18 to 22 students that are at the Y right now. We're seeing an increased projected number of seven to eight students, Granby students for next school year. So I know that, that will have implications regarding staffing and budgeting for additional staff. And we also continue to have other surrounding districts reach out to us for our transition program.
So.
Ask a question? So just seven from Granby, because I saw that we have three and then three out-of-town placements this year. So next year, we're looking at having seven from Granby alone in the transition program?
Seven. Additional, in addition to what we, we have three Granby students now. We have three out of town, so we have six students there currently. And then we're looking at seven additional students, Granby students that are 12th graders now, that are going to, that are in the program, that, the FAP program, that will then feed, the FAP program feeds into the Bear Transition Academy. Those are the students who are receiving Functional Life Skills Program. Some still go out to Gen Ed for, for experiences, electives, things like that. But that is a feeder to the Transition Academy. So seven additional Granby students.
So it'll be up to 13.
Yes. So that will have implications for needing additional staffing and looking to kind of expand that program.
And would you accept more students from out of district? Do you have a cap on the number?
There's no cap. It really, just the more students we accept, the more staffing we'll need. Well, it has implications for, you know, if we're growing out of the Y. Right now, we have one, we have one little kitchen. We have one big kind of community room that we share with the Y. The Y is a great partnership, but we can accept as many as far as we can house there. So no cap at this time.
Okay.
Because we still continue to get other districts interested and have tours and things like that, so.
Are there many districts around that have a program like that?
Yeah, most districts do. It's actually state regulations now is that you have to have a program, a transition program, and it has to be off-campus. So you have to be out within the community. That was a push about three years ago from the state. So actually, all the surrounding towns do have transition programs like this. Some of the smaller towns don't, and so that's why they're looking to tuition into ours. But like Sims Berry has one, for example, Farmington.
The bigger districts.
The bigger districts. And then, so we would look to tuition more kids in to help grow our program.
I have a question. I work in special ed as well and I know that the, with the rising needs, you know, particularly mental health, which is my area, but also just in general, more kids being identified. I'm curious what the caseloads look like and what we are doing to manage those and ensure that the staffing is appropriate to meet kids' needs and also make sure we don't burn out our staff, especially in such a high demand area.
Yep. Yeah, we certainly, I certainly could get the board and give Sheri a specific caseload numbers. The caseloads, we are smaller than some, some of the surrounding towns. So we have smaller caseloads than Sims Berry and Farmington, for sure.
And for the related service providers too?
Those are small as well. Yep. So as we look to continue to kind of build and expand our programming to meet these continued needs across the district, you know, I look forward to your continued support and partnership in meeting the needs of the district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional questions?
Yep.
Yep, she does have one, more questions.
I think, what kind of structures are in place to ensure that IEPs are being implemented with fidelity?
That's a great question. I would say the department chairs are really key in that. That's why those, that structure was created. They sit in the PPTs, they collaborate with the building principal. So it's either a building principal or the department chair facilitating and being the administrator in the PPT. And then afterwards, there's always a lot of follow-up to ensure compliance, that the IEP is written in a timely manner. So the first thing that they're doing is working with the teachers to make sure that the IEP has to be finalized within five days after the meeting. And they are doing a lot of the finalization in addition to some of the school sites that we have outlined in the buildings that also finalize IEPs. So that's one piece, because that's a huge compliance piece, making sure it's finalized timely. So I would say the department chairs are really key in assisting with compliance, timelines in the building, and then implementation of the IEP. So they're doing, you'll see them in classrooms, they're doing walkthroughs, they're checking on students, they're following up with teachers to support implementation of an IEP. So there's a lot of follow-up around compliance.
One more question. Would you describe our program as sort of a console model or is it co-teaching? Or which way are you, are you leaning a particular way?
Which program in general?
Like just IEPs, like students who have IEPs? Like are they more likely to have like a teacher who's doing most of the implementation? Or is it mainly co-taught or some of each?
It really depends at the different levels. So we have a little of everything happening across the district. We have teachers pushing in and supporting in the classroom, doing some co-teaching. We have resource where teachers are pulling out and providing small group instruction, repetition. We have, and then the programs that we opened are more of a self-contained special education classroom within a school setting. So I would say we have a combination of things happening. That continuum. Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Can you speak at all to the, the interaction between the, the special education department and the tiered systems of supports within the schools? Because, you know, I'll say I get a lot of sort of informal questions and comments from community members that folks that don't necessarily want to come to the board, comment, or do anything publicly. But, you know, it seems like there's a lot of concern within the district about how kids are identified, how long it takes to get them identified. It seems to me that there's a perception from at least certain folks in the community that they have to fight for services.
I mean, I could talk a little bit about the collaboration between MTSS, the multi-tiered system of support and special education. I think in each building, it looks differently. Each building has an MTSS team that reviews students. They look at data, they look at designing interventions based on whatever data that they've looked at. So if it's reading data that they've looked at or math data, behavioral data, interventions are put in place and communicated to the family. I think what can be frustrating sometimes, right, for families, that piece is you're, you're wanting to get in and fix the problem. And, you know, by law, we have to make sure and kind of rule out that intervention piece. We really have to make sure that you're ruling out that lack of instruction. And it's not necessarily a lack of instruction that was never provided for a teacher. I mean, I recently had a student who had a hearing impairment and missed some school in grade one. And those are really critical years, right, for, for phonics. And so we made sure that that intervention cycle is four to six weeks, right? And then if a student's making progress, then you're re-looking at those interventions. You might do another four to six week window. So I do think that that can be frustrating at times when you want to get your child identified or get them, you know, an IEP. But the intervention is really key to make sure that you're ruling out that it wasn't a lack of instruction before you identify a child with a disability. We take that pretty seriously and want to make sure that when you're identifying and developing an IEP, that, that is truly what is needed. Any additional questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to a school counseling report. Megan Reiner, Director of School Counseling, will present a school counseling report to the board.
Good evening, Superintendent Burke, Assistant Superintendent Parsons, and members of the board. It's so nice to meet you. It's so nice to meet you. I've had the privilege of being here for about a month and a half, and it has been one of the best decisions I have made in a very long time. Being a member of this school community has just brought a lot of joy to my heart and constantly learning, and I also want to just say thank you for taking the time to spend with a little bit of our school counseling and college and career report. I look forward to any of the discourse and questions of the evening. All right, so I have the clicker in my hand. Well, if it doesn't, are you my backup plan?
Yeah.
You are my backup plan. So this was last week, and we were having, just the privilege of having so many colleges, universities, technical schools, and military branches coming in to speak with all of our students. And it was, I was more or less standing in the background, watching the kids interact with the different colleges and different opportunities. And Hillary Peterson, who is our college and career teaching assistant, did a great like scavenger hunt for the kids, really also helped to engage them with asking a lot of questions to open up their opportunities to just not what was on Naviance, but to really start to take some time to dive into what might be a stretch school, what might be something in more of my comfort. So I think the kids took a lot away from it, and it really built a nice culture around school community and connection. It's really about connection. I'm ready. So this evening, it's kind of going to be sent to a few different parts. I want to go through the AP report and speak a little to that for this past year. I also would like to speak to our ECE student courses and what that looks like for credits, kind of give a comparison as far as those numbers between the AP and ECE, and then talk about our wonderful partnerships between our community colleges and our new partnership that will be coming with CCSU and S NUTAC. Okay. So I wanted to bring some attention over here to the latest 2024. So when a student is taking an AP test at the end of the year for advanced placement, they have the opportunity to score, with your highest score percentage is going to be your five, and obviously, like, your one or two does exist. But what was really amazing to see is that our percentage of students was eighty-nine percent or higher with a three over on the course of the five-year trend. That's one of the highest trends we've had for our number so far. I thought that was important to really draw some attention to it, because the achievement has been great. So if you have a student applying to a school and they have an AP course, and they have a three or better, the college will, ninety-nine percent of the time, depending upon the college, take the AP credit for the student. So that part, I think, was a great achievement for our kids. I wasn't prepared for that slide. I have them all written, though, over there. Grab that, too, if necessary.
No, I got it.
You got it? Okay. Yes, that's perfect. Okay, thank you. All right, so our next percentage rate, I want to just give you a moment to just look at this, and I'll start breaking this down a little bit. So we're starting back, let's go for our first line for 2020. Total amount of students for APs. So it goes across the line, and we see the numbers, and you see a dip in the numbers, but I also want to draw attention also to the number of exams that have been taken and the number of kids with the score of three or more. And I can speak to that, but I'm not going to do that yet, because the explanation comes when we get to ECE. The other aspect for the number of exams, if we have one section that doesn't run a year for APs, that might take away twenty-five kids. So it also varies upon what's being offered for what year and what has been opened and not based upon the courses. So from when I was looking back in the history, that was what I was able to find so far within those numbers. I think to draw attention to, again, the rate of the scores of three or more, I think is also exemplary. Does anybody have any questions so far, just looking at that? Because it's a little bit of data on there.
So I have taught a lot of AP classes, and eighty-eight, to me, would be an indication that maybe the standards to get into those courses are too high. It's a different way of looking at it, but if you ask more kids to push themselves to reach, right, because if ninety percent of the kids are passing the exam, there might be another cohort of kids who could possibly push themselves and benefit from the experience of the AP, even though not all of them would necessarily pass.
Yeah, I, thank you for that. I think it's also for the next piece, to see the relation to how ECE has come into it, and I think that might be like the counterbalance to it. But I also would like to take notice of kind of what you said in terms of how we look at kids who are coming into AP courses. So thank you. I'm ready.
Can you actually speak to that, of how, how students are getting into those classes? Is it by recommendation, or are the students allowed to sort of self-select regardless of?
It's all of the above. There's teacher recommendation, there's, school counselors meet with students and also with parents regarding the recommendations. I think it's twofold. If there's a student that wants to take an AP, they have the opportunity to do so, and I don't think they're being deterred. I think the opportunities are being given to all. I think it also is a matter of self-confidence within students saying, you know, is this really attainable for me? And then us building up the self-efficacy within kids, saying, yes, you can do this. So what is that pathway, and what does that look like from you starting now, I'm overseeing grade six through twelve? So looking at that now in terms of social, emotional learning and confidence, how do we build that sustainability within kids? So it's systemic.
I also just wanted to call attention to the fact that when we did the summer programming report, we also highlighted the AP Power Boost. So we rarely, if ever, turn a child, like, if a child's interested in taking an AP course, we will support that child. But for any student, out of those hundred and sixty-seven students who took courses last year, there were probably about twenty to thirty of them who were brand-new to an AP course, and that's why we've created that AP Power Boost, to sort of review the study skills and strategies that are needed before going into that course, too.
Thank you for being my right hand on that. I appreciate that. All right, this is just a note of some of our AP scholars for the year, and this is also goes on our school profile, that's included within the packet at the end, based upon the twenty-one advanced placement courses that are offered at our school. We are also offering a couple of courses when kids do some self-study and want the opportunity to sit for the AP exam, if it's not being currently offered within our building. All right, let's get into some of the extra of the good stuff with the ECE-Yukon partnership, because I honestly think it's one of the coolest things that our kids get to participate in. So how the Yukon Early College Experience works is we have our teachers who are ECE instructors, and they're also certified as adjunct professors at Yukon, and it really creates a college atmosphere within the classroom to get the kids ready for our post-secondary education. In terms of, like, we have the left-hand side, where we have a combination of AP classes that are also Yukon-certified, and on the right-hand side, we just have the Yukon courses. So I just met with students two weeks ago and sent communication out with parents to try to, I think, unpack the difference between a Yukon ECE course and an AP course, and I used the help of Rodney Scudder, because he's our ECE coordinator and wonderful, to also help students understand a little bit better why it would be a great idea to sit for the AP exam, to see if, like, what score the student would also receive, and for the Yukon ECE credit. So in terms of college tuition, right now, it's only fifty dollars a credit for students to be able to earn one credit within the course. And when students earn between four to six credits, the savings for a student when they're going to college is, it's exponential. So, for example, one of our courses, let's say they earn six credits, it's almost half a semester of college. So you're saving as low as three hundred dollars compared to the thousands of dollars that you'd be walking into. And then the secondary aspect for the AP class, there's a certain amount of pride, I think, is one aspect that's associated with. I worked my absolute best, I tried so hard, I persevered, I finally took this AP exam, and, you know, I nailed it. So we have the one aspect where it costs a hundred dollars for the actual course, which is a lot of money, and the secondary aspect is it's almost the insurance plan. So let's say the student did really well on the AP course for the test, but on the ECE, this doesn't always happen, but for the actual ECE class, they earned a grade of seventy or less, then they wouldn't actually receive credit through the university for that coursework. So it's almost like an insurance plan, because we have some kids that are great test takers that aren't also able to complete all of the work. So Rodney Scudder calls it our insurance plan. But the most, I really like it, because it's actually true, and kids start to learn the concept of it. But the most remarkable statistic, I think, is on the next page, if you wouldn't mind going down. Just take a moment to look at this amazing number from last year alone. Hundred and seventeen students enrolled in ECE courses at Gramby Memorial High School earned a total of seven hundred and four college credits. This is just ECE alone, this is not S NUTAC, this is not any of the college connections. I think the number is daunting and incredible. So I asked some of the counselors, what's the most amount of credits you've seen kids leave with? And I think some of the highest is between about thirty to forty at the cap. So you have a kid going into college as a sophomore, and parents are asking a lot of times, where can I apply these credits to? And through the Yukon Partnership, the kids finish with a transcript, that's applicable to most universities, and if you log into the Yukon website through the ECE area, you could see where all the articulation agreements are with all the universities, so our kids could become good consumers as they're looking at Naviance and really figuring out what their next pathway is, and is this the right decision for me? It's also a reason why we see less kids enrolled in taking the AP exam, because they see the benefit of the ECE credits, and they don't want to pay for the AP exam if they already have that. And there's, there's nothing we can do in that area, except give them the options and the education. So that's, I think, also a reason why we might see the amount of AP exams drop a little bit. That was that piece. Any questions, comments? Yes?
So I taught AP French in Gramby for about thirteen years, and ECE, and it was very, very difficult to meet the requirements of the College Board and of Yukon. It's not easy to have the two together. And I often would tell the students that it was better to pursue the ECE, because, you know, I think it's more representative, as an educator, of what they've actually learned, because it shows the grade over the course of the entire course. Is there any thought that maybe we would uncouple the AP and the ECE for the languages?
To be perfectly honest, I do not know, but we could look into it, and we can come back with more information around that, to see if that would be something that would be agreeable with our program of studies and kind of the future of the course, how many kids are taking it currently, how many kids have used that credit when they're applying to other universities. I think I'd like to just look at it systemically, and then come back to you, if that's okay?
Yeah, sure. Wonderful. Because I know that a lot of students, they could certainly take the exam, and there are advantages, of course, to the AP, because I think Yukon says it's eighty-seven percent of universities will accept their credit, the ECE credit, and then maybe the AP credit will be accepted by those other schools. But I'm just curious, because I think, I think the numbers have been decreasing in language anyhow of the students that take the AP exams, and they prefer the ECE credit.
Yes. I think it'll be interesting in the future to see what also happens, because there's a lot of universities that are also no longer looking at SAT scores, and, you know, that goes right down to College Board with APs. So there's more and more, I just sat in AP, a school counseling directors' meeting yesterday in Southington, and we were all talking about all the articulations with all of the local community colleges and universities that have just been starting to, like, break through in so many ways, where Yukon has very, very high standards in order to be an instructor of a course in conjunction as an adjunct here. But, for example, S NUTAC, or some of even Goodwin, have reduced those roadblocks, and even CCSU, which I'll get to a little bit later, but it's becoming easier to create these agreements with these schools at such a low cost of tuition, that I'm interested to see what happens, the dynamic of admissions and the AP in a few years, and seeing where the trend goes.
As a parent of students who have taken, who have availed themselves of the ECE and the AP classes, I can attest to, my oldest son went to Syracuse University, and he was able to get twenty-two and a half credits going into Syracuse from his AP and ECE classes. And my youngest son, he's up at Clark and Whister, and he got twelve and a half credits. So it really makes, it makes a big difference if you can do it. And it's, it's a nice savings for mom and dad.
Yeah, I was about to say, not only is it a nice savings, but it also opens up so many opportunities. If you have kids applying for, like, let's say, three-plus-three program, where it's three years of undergraduate, three years of grad program, on top of if you have kids who want a double major, it opens up all these different opportunities for students and cost savings altogether. So that's currently a little bit of that remarkable number that I just wanted to hold some light to. Thank you for sharing that, I appreciate it. Okay? Let's continue. All right, our CCP HSPP connections, there's a lot of acronyms here, so let's break it down a little bit. So our college and career pathway is through S NUTAC. Our courses are on the left that we're currently offering, and these are the three credits that are offered to tenth, eleventh, or twelfth graders to be able to take through our articulation with S NUTAC. We also have, it's basically Connecticut State Community Colleges that have really started to try to up the ante with our articulations. I think it's just a matter of ensuring that the communication and the point people are accurate, and that we've built our systems and structures in to be able to take in the transcripts and to really look at the courses to make sure that they're creative fluencyes. So this is, these are our fluencyes for our current courses between business, marketing, and environmental sciences with S NUTAC currently. I'm ready. So if I was going to quote Rodney Scudder, I might as well do the same thing for Ms. Clark. All right, so last year, sixty-one students achieved a hundred and eighty-three college credits alone, just with the partnership with S NUTAC through the community college. So I think if we take the first and second right now, I think we're close to a thousand credits at this point, we're getting there? Okay? You ready? Thank you so much for your help. You're killing it over there, thank you. All right, so this is now S NUTAC. And this is only for juniors and seniors, so six credits per course, and it's for Honors Advanced Accounting, ten students that have applied, that was sixty credits for last year. So that's another dual enrollment partnership program that we currently have. Ready? And this one is for juniors and seniors only, and this is an amazing program through manufacturing, welding, and electronics. So our students spend half the day at our high school, and they spend the rest of the day within a trade program, and they are earning dual credit through both while hitting their graduation requirements to gear towards an associate's degree in whatever program it is. And the kids, the kids love it, and it's offering a non-traditional career path for kids, where college is not necessarily going to be their first path, but this also gives them the university campus experience. And prior to this aspect, I worked in the trades in terms of school counseling for the tech schools, and one of the nicest things that we really taught the kids that was super important is that you need to have some business background. So you could be the, well, it's called welding, the universal language. So you can weld anything, and they call it the universal language, because you could do it anywhere in the world, you need a welder, but if you don't have the business savvy behind it to understand finances, financial literacy, then that's something that's really important that we're drawing and working on with our kids with within these programs itself as well. So the welding is only offered to seniors, and manufacturing and electronics are being offered to juniors. Any questions on this? Any future welders?
Actually, I have a wild anecdote about that. So I ran into one of my former students who went to S NUTAC, right, for the welding program, got a job at Pratt, and I'm up at Yukon in the library working on my doctorate, and who do I run into but that same kid? And I'm like, what are you doing up here? And he'd gone to S NUTAC for two years, gone to Pratt. Pratt then paid for him to go get his engineering degree, all on their dime, while he's earning a full-time salary at Pratt. I mean, it's just completely... I mean, it's just completely different way of...
And they don't even require you to stay with them after paying for the education at Pratt. They just pay for it. It's pretty amazing.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you for that. I've had a lot of those stories as well in terms of even just manufacturing, companies willing to not only pay for secondary education, but the gap within the employment, um, being able to employ people within manufacturing, you know? We're known as, in the state, as one of the leaders in manufacturing this country, but we can't fill the jobs fast enough. So as many times when I am able to see kids and they understand what CNC machining is and, um, they're able to understand some of the engineering behind it, I think that is one of the coolest things to show. And I want the kids in, um, the middle school this year to be able to see all of that as well, so they have a good idea as far as, you know, they need to have a tactile understanding of how things work to get to that secondary aspect of the engineering piece of it. So how STEM works holistically with that is, um, it's a great example. And new for 2025, we are working on this. Um, this is something that was, uh, began last year and the, um, articulation agreement is with CCSU. And it's for, um, personal finance, introduction to the financial accounting and the fundamentals of marketing. Um, so this is what we're hoping to be able to have kids start to earn credit for, for the end of the year. Um, we, so far, uh, from some of the feedback from some of the directors have said that CCSU has been great to work with. They actually provide transcripts to us without us even asking. So we should actually have, um, some great communication and some nice transcripts of credit to add into our students' Q and folder by the time they're ready to apply for colleges in their senior year. And this is what it's all about, you know, preparing our kids, ensuring that we are giving them the best opportunities, um, both socially, emotionally and academically to be the best humans as possible to fit the vision of our graduate. And, um, we're hoping day by day through our department and with the collaboration of other departments, um, in order to create these opportunities for kids. I wanted to say thank you for giving me the opportunities to speak with you. And any other questions or comments, um, I'd be welcome to collaborate and, and have a discussion around. And if you want to see the school profile, um, it's attached to it. And our post-secondary pieces for next year, this is where everyone is going. Um, and I forgot about this slide, which is why I ended it a little early, I apologize. All right, um, so for next year, um, I think one of your highest numbers that I want to draw attention to, I mean, the seventy percent are attending four-year colleges and universities, but when I dig back and look at the twenty-five percent are attending two-year colleges, this is so much primarily to do because it's free. Um, so many kids are seeing the value of not wanting to leave college with a mortgage full of, um, loans. And they are very much trying to work, go to school, so they could then transfer to a four-year university. They could still take any of the EC credit with them if they have it at that point. Um, it, it's always good to be able to be used and attained for them, whether it's CCSU, S N U T U C, um, whatever college we have Yukon, the articulation agreement with. So I think that, um, is something worth noting is the difference in how our students are currently feeling. It's also attributed to, I think, COVID and feeling a little bit safer with staying at home and not yet ready to leave. So I think those areas are both in conjunction with each other. The school profile is attached, but I do love my QR codes. Um, so here's a QR code as well, if you are interested in bringing up the, um, school profile. And that will list for this past year, um, the celebrations, a lot of the difference is in all the different AP courses, what kids were taking, what they did not take, and where, uh, students were accepted in college at the back.
Any questions?
No. It was so nice to meet you all. Thank you for having me. And I look forward to coming back at some point in the future.
This is great. Thank you so much.
May I just comment briefly?
Yes.
Thank you so much, Megan. And, um, I just think this is an opportunity to remind the board that Megan just started with us this year as the Director of School Counseling. And what's so special about her role is that it was a portion of Julie Greeney who retired. She was an assistant principal at the high school and school counseling. But this allows us to really provide depth and breadth to the role. And you heard Megan reference the middle school a number of times. And so if we are committed to helping our students achieve, um, you know, greatness, their full potential, when they walk across that stage of graduation, we know that it has to start as early as possible. So she is already having a tremendous positive influence at the middle school as well because she's able to articulate and look at those pathways for kids, build that excitement that you were talking about. Um, and so I think year over year, we will reap the rewards of having, um, a concentrated effort focus, you know, in this area. Um, so I look forward to having Megan, you know, come back and speak to you on these topics, you know, in the future. But thank you so much, Megan, for putting together this presentation. You know, she had to look, do a lot of digging and research to do this for you because she has only just been with us for a couple of months. So thank you.
Thank you. All right. All right, we're going to move on to our first quarter budget expense report. Nikki Stevenson, Director of Finance and Operations, will come up, will present from there.
From here. She has the microphone. She's going to come up.
Um, so, uh, attached to the memo, you'll find the first budget expense report for the fiscal year, uh, defined by budget category, covering the periods of July through September twenty-four. Analysis of both personnel and program accounts suggests that projected expenditures will be covered within budget. Please note, there are a few lines with negative available balances, which are due to things like increased insurance costs, the addition of an in-district bus route, and the need for regular education teaching assistance that were originally reduced, reduced during the FY twenty-five budgeting process. Special education at this point in time, um, is estimated to be currently within the spending plan. However, we are currently seeing deficits within outplacement tuition and transportation lines. It is early in the school year and special education accounts, um, constantly fluctuate throughout the year. So of course, the account activity and balances will continue to be closely monitored. And then I'll just pause right there. Um, if you wanted to take a look at pages one and two of, attached to that memo, this report is a little bit different than what you're used to seeing. So I just kind of wanted to give you an opportunity to review it. It's, the page one is all program expenditures, whereas page two is all personnel, salary and wage expenditures. Um, also on page one, when you're looking at the program and on page two, when you're looking at personnel, I did find it important to separate, separate out special education so that you can see the expenses associated directly with special education because it is one of those that's usually very volatile. Are there any questions with regards to how the, the categories are?
I'm curious, the, the category of special education and the category of certified staff are separate. So does that mean special education staff who are certified are not included in that?
Correct. So any expenses associated with special education are going to fall within that special education line. Everything else is separated out by regular information or general education. Um, continuing on to the quality and diversity funds, the opening balance, um, was ninety-five thousand, three thirty-five. There's been a small amount of expenses in this account thus far with no revenue being received and booked to date. Current expenditures are related to summer school, social work, tutoring and one-to-one technology equipment costs. Once the district starts receiving the open choice grant funds and tuition monies, we should start to see a shift in that ending balance. And finally, the revenue to the town for FY twenty-five is currently projected to be a little over two-point-five million. Similar to the Q and D fund, no funds have been received and provided to the town to date. As fluctuating special education expenses directly impact grant amounts, the excess cost grant has been and will continue to be the largest unknown throughout the year. Additionally, the reimbursement funding percentages by and state for this grant are not typically final until the end of the year, like closer to May. I think that's it. Do you guys have any questions?
Any questions? All right. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
We're going to move on to, uh, action items. Um, looking for a motion to approve the minutes of the September eighteenth.
I move that the Granby Board of Education approve the minutes from the September eighteenth, twenty-twenty-four Board of Education meeting.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstain?
Abstain.
More abstentions? Okay. Uh, we have a, another motion, a second reading and approval, revised policy three-five-four-one, transportation. Anyone want to take on this motion?
I move that the Granby Board of Education adopt revised policy three-five-four-one, transportation as recommended by the Curriculum, Policy, Technology Communications Subcommittee, including the opposed edits presented this evening.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay. Moving on. Second reading and approval of revised policy six-one-four-six, graduation requirements. Can I get a motion?
I move that the Granby Board of Education adopt revised policy six-one-four-six, graduation requirements as recommended by the Curriculum, Policy, Technology Communications Subcommittee.
I'll second. We have a second. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. Moving on to committee reports. Curriculum did not, I, I think we, curriculum has not met since, um, or we've gone over the last curriculum meeting.
We have, because we didn't have a meeting last.
Finance met, um, finance subcommittee met tonight before this meeting. Donna, do you want to?
Yes, thank you. We reviewed the statement of accounts and approved the statements of accounts in our meeting. We also discussed the contract negotiations for the administrators. We have come to a tentative agreement and we're hoping to finalize that agreement with the administrators and have it ready to be brought to the board to be voted upon at our next meeting. We also discussed the athletic fields and track. As some of you may recall, there have been ongoing issues with regard to the track. There are some areas that have had some puddling of water, basically some waves in the track that we have attempted to repair over the past couple of years to no avail. So it is something that we will be looking at in closer detail and considering in the next budget cycle. Potentially the replacement of the track and the field. It's reaching at the end of its expected life at this point. And the decision to move forward without continuing to expend money on trying to fix something that's really not making any improvements. We think it's time to start to consider actual potentially replacing the track and the, and the field, the athletic field. So that's something we will be considering during the next budget cycle. Lastly, we discussed the issue with buses. As everyone may be aware, throughout the state, there is an issue with a lack of bus drivers. And this has been affecting our schools. It also has been affecting our athletic programs. So the, our town finance, our board finance manager, Nikki Stevens, and our superintendent are going to be meeting with our bus company to try and discuss some of the issues we've been having. They have a meeting and we're looking at different options moving forward to try and help improve our bus situation. And that's it.
Thank you, Donna. All right, other board, um, report, other board related reports. Um, I don't think we have any crack or cave updates. As we always know in this meeting, those, those meetings are, are tough to get to, um, as they're in the middle of the day, the workday. Um, Granby Educational Foundation.
Yeah, um, there hasn't been a meeting of the GEF since our last, um, board meeting, but I did hear from them that two grants were approved this month. Um, one for, um, almost eight hundred dollars for the native peoples of Kwinnetukuk to visit second grade classrooms, so a, a Native American history, um, lesson. And then a hundred twenty dollars to support the Children's Book Festival, which is going to be happening for the second time.
That was such a great...
Yeah.
So I love that it's ongoing and the GEF is supporting it. All right. Uh, moving on to calendar of events, um, the calendar is listed, uh, um, here. I'll, I'll just shout out a couple of things. Tomorrow night is the Granby Middle School Trivia Night. Um, October twenty-third, um, as you mentioned, is the National Honor Society induction, induction ceremony. Um, and then just a reminder, November fifth, no school professional development and that is voting day, correct?
Yes, it is.
That is. All right, um, any board member announcements?
Is it possible to have the PD that day not here at the high school? I know the last voting day, there was a, a real issue with parking.
So we, sure. So we meet with, um, our town voter, uh, registrar voters and, and collaborate with them on that. This year, particularly because it's a presidential election and we expect a greater turnout, each of our schools will stay at their home school for professional learning, whereas we do normally convene the entire district staff at the high school. So the only, um, staff members that will be at the high school are the teachers that work at the high school. Um, so there will still be some folks there, but we're going to identi, we have already identified traffic patterns and parking spaces. There won't be any play rehearsal or sporting, you know, we think we'll be able to manage it. Um, we do typically capitalize on a full district opportunity on that day, um, but we're going to be doing some individual training at schools. So it should be okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, any other board member announcements? Okay. Uh, any action items?
Um, I didn't hear anything.
No, actually, we had talked about Dave, we, about the special ed. The changes in needs for special ed.
I had two requests. One was your question related to caseloads. Um, so we will, um, share that back, um, via the board chair as well as, um, data I put over the last five years, but that wasn't specified. Um, the percentage of students that are special education and the number of students in it, and so that we can look at trends by, by identification.
Thank you for following up.
We'll work on that. Yep.
It's a team effort.
It is.
Okay, we're going to move on to, uh, superintendent's report.
Thank you. Um, so as you shared at the start of the meeting, I would like to use this opportunity to just provide, uh, the board and our community members, anyone that's listening into this, um, in the future, um, a summary of what occurred yesterday in our school district. Um, a threat came in via the Veterans Crisis Line. Um, this was reported directly to the Granby Police. Um, and due to the nature of the threat and some very specific language that targeted Granby Memorial High School, um, the Granby Police Department did activate a lockdown situation. So directly from the police department, they can put our schools into lockdown, um, when we believe that there is a potential for imminent danger. Um, the Granby Police Department was on-site immediately. Um, we spoke to them, I spoke to them directly as they're en route to our school. Um, they did put out a call for support in order to sweep the buildings. When we go into lockdown, it is essential that every member of our school community, students, custodial staff, teachers, teaching assistants, principals, office staff, every person that is on-site at the school when it ventures into lockdown immediately, um, is locked behind a closed door. That may be, um, the location which is an instructional space, but it may also be other spaces across the school. And once that lockdown is initiated... And once that lockdown is initiated, it must stay in place until we have an all-clear from the authorities. Given the nature of our middle and high school campus, they are in such close proximity, we do have students and staff that go between those buildings. Both schools are put in lockdown if there is a threat at either or both, obviously, of those two schools. Immediately upon that lockdown being initiated by the Simsbury Police, we sent a text communication, an alert, letting everyone know, and our staff and our families, that we were in lockdown, and then additional information would come as we were able. Approximately 20 minutes later, we sent out a second alert, letting people know that police were on-site, that the lockdown was still underway. It felt like an awful long period of time. I know for myself, in my role, we were pacing. We were anxiously awaiting the ability to let you know that it was lifted. But we could not do so until we had every ounce, every corner of our two schools secure. And that took about 50 minutes to complete. At 3:15, we were able to send the announcement that the lockdown had been lifted. And during the duration of that 50 minutes, we were constantly gaining additional information from our neighboring communities. Granby Police was receiving information from their partners and other communities. And we did learn at the close of the lockdown that other school districts across the state, four of us in total, at the same time had fell victim to what is called a swatting, where there is a threat that is communicated, and, you know, it's a false report. And it truly is intended to disrupt, you know, our emergency response system. And unfortunately, this is happening in record numbers. The state of Connecticut alone has had upwards of 80 of these swatting calls just since school opened this year. A tremendous amount of energy and resources and time are spent, frankly, unnecessarily because of these calls. And there are task forces at the state and national level. I, myself and other area superintendents just attended last week a swatting webinar so that we can learn more about it ironically. And yet, we too were, you know, victim to this event. But I wanted to take this opportunity to share that, you know, I am grateful and I am proud to represent our school district because our staff, from central office to our IT department, to our maintenance and facilities, to the teachers and teaching assistants and adults in our buildings that were in locked spaces with students for almost an hour, that is a tremendous strain for the kids and for the faculty. And I'm so grateful because they followed the protocols which they have been taught. This was an unknown to us, and so the response was heavy because we, you know, when we do drills, there's a level of awareness that we're going to be entering into a drill. And so this was very challenging for us at the school district, and I'm proud for how it was handled. It was handled very well. Our students were respectful, they remained calm, they listened to their teachers and followed directions. So truly, it's an opportunity to learn and to gather feedback, which is how we spent most of the morning today. And we will be meeting with the Granby Police leadership so that we can learn from their perspective what went right, what can we improve. And we've done the same, you know, in-house. Unfortunately, I do have to mention that one major disruption, unfortunately, to the process is the use of Facebook and social media while the lockdown is still going on. And I'm a mom, and I understand the need for immediate information. Last month, I shared with the board our communication chart, and you have heard me share how important it is that we have accurate information, timely, yes, but also accurate information. And so when community members, parents turn to social media while the crisis is still unfolding, you are going to receive false information. You are going to receive clips that people might have heard on a police scanner without full information. Unfortunately, this is just not helpful, and it did elicit more fear and anxiety for our students. We had parents that were contacting their students. Students are in lockdown, parents are sending photos of the police walking into our school district with their weapons. That elicits fear. And so I really beg of the community to work with us in these situations. Our primary responsibility is to keep faculty and students safe and calm and in a place where they can follow directions, where they can be ready in a moment's notice to take direction from our first responders. Across that 50 minutes, there was never a time that we let our guard down. We were ready to follow emergency response, to take appropriate action as necessary. Until that lockdown was lifted, we didn't lighten our effort. And so we can help each other be safer and stronger and a little more calm if we just are patient. I know how hard it is. Communicate, yes, I'm okay, we're good, whatever it takes. I understand that that's important. And at the same time, sending information into the school is really challenging and in fact disruptive for our teachers. They're hearing, they're trying to field information from kids in real time as misinformation, rumor, and just falsehoods were coming in. That really, really added to the challenge for us yesterday. So I ask that we truly just check ourselves and hold ourselves accountable with the social media use. It's truly a challenge for us. We had the opportunity today to debrief with all of our students at the middle school and high school level. Both Principal Tannis and Principal Dunn sent home additional communications today, letting families know what was done to debrief. I was in all of our schools this morning. I spent time with kids and teachers. It was very well done. And so obviously, I want to say thank you to our Granby Police, to the Simsbury Police that provided additional support, to the parents for trusting us and letting us do our job, and to the Board of Ed for your support. The list is very long. It's truly a team effort when these types of incidences, you know, come on our doorstep. We don't expect it, we don't want that to happen. Unfortunately, it's happening in record numbers across our country. And so it's bound to happen at some point, but I think we were prepared. So thank you for letting me just share some additional details. Are there any questions from the board related to those events that I could answer?
I have a comment. I was just, I think it's worth mentioning or reminding, last Board of Ed meeting, Chief Sansom came in and joined you for a presentation of our emergency response protocol and what plan is. And it's just worth mentioning, if anyone wants to go back and watch that presentation. And can you reiterate where folks can find that information online?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for reminding me to share that. It is right on our homepage of our website. You can see the crisis response protocol that we put into a nice colorful doc. It's lived in policy and in emergency manuals for forever, for a long, long time, but we wanted to summarize that in a more readable fashion. So that's available on our website, right on the homepage, as well as the communication document that we shared. And we followed that to a T. It was helpful for everyone. Jen's laughing because there was a lot of effort to make sure that we stuck to the protocol and that we made sure that if parents were expecting that of us, we gave it to them as well as we could. As I had shared last time, keeping kids safe and doing our job is first, and then communicating as timely as we're able to is second. And Linda Powell, my administrative assistant, and Andy Buckle, Jen Parsons, administrative assistant, were key in helping us with those communications. So thank you. It truly does take a team as we're managing many, many, many incoming communications. So our secretaries at the schools, all of those people really just step up to the job as it's needed. Our elementary schools were significantly impacted as well because it was a dismissal. And so that pushed us back about an hour for all of those dismissal procedures. So it was a whole district effort. Everybody got involved and everybody really stepped up to the occasion. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Does anyone have any questions for Superintendent Burke on that?
Okay. Couple other quick things on a lighter note for my update. I got to meet the French exchange students this morning. We had breakfast at the high school. It was lovely to meet them. I think we had 13 students. They're with us till the 22nd. On Monday, Mr. Chris DeGray will start with us as our new Director of Facilities. Super excited for him to join us. Most recently, he has been the Director of Facilities and Capital Improvements for Berkshire Community College. He has a depth and breadth of knowledge, which will be really helpful to us. The next vision is coming out soon. I do highlight some of our security measures, so please be sure to loop into that. The Granby Parks and Rec is holding a trunk or treat event this Sunday at 1:30. I will be there giving out candy, as will other staff members. Many board members wish to join me? I'll be right out front, the Board of Education office, passing out candy. The trunk or treat event has traditionally been at Famon Brook Park, but they're moving it to the Town Hall complex, so that should be fun. Hopefully, the weather will be agreeable. And lastly, I just want to share that there is a Farmington Valley Flu Clinic being held on Wednesday, October 23rd, in the high school cafeteria from 2:00 to 5:30, and that's open to anyone that wishes to attend. Our next meeting will be Wednesday, November 6th. Isn't that unbelievable?
Wow. November.
Yes, day after Election Day. And of course, we're closed on Election Day, as we've already discussed. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, thank you.